Call the meeting to order, I'll rise for the pledge allegiance.
We messed up budgeting.
Mm-hmm. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And they're approved. Review the minutes for December 13th. Regular meeting minutes, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
So second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And it's approved. Any open public comment? Alright, hearing none. Go on to guests. Steve in Follett for the declaration of inclusion proposal.
Hello folks.
Hello.
Steve.
Hi Steve.
Can you see me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, and I can see you.
Great.
Have you all had a chance to read the declaration?
Yes.
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 Okay, um, the supporting materials are, are, uh, just there for, for those of you that are interested in looking them over. Um, I think it's pretty clear cut, it's, it's a pretty clear document, um, and I'm just, um, I'm just here to request that the select board vote on it, um, and decide if it's, uh, you know, something that, that, uh, the town wants to take a position on.
Really happy to see you.
There's a list of towns, some twenty odd towns I believe, which have already adopted this, um, declaration. Um, Michael, did that show up in your email?
It, it did Steve, I got it, I think about an hour and a half ago, and I actually think the entire packet that you sent me has the towns listed on it as well, which I provided to the select board.
Yeah, and, and this might be updated, uh, the list I sent you recently, it might be updated with a few towns. Um, I've got, uh, does anybody have any questions about this issue?
Anybody have any questions?
Okay, as I say, it's, it's pretty straightforward, um, and, um, I think it's something that the, uh, that the town should accept, and I would, uh, I'd like to see this as, as part of our town policy. Um, I think we're all aware of the contribution of immigrants to the town of Proctor, uh, not to mention the whole state of Vermont. Um, and I think this just, um, this just clarifies, this, this just makes a clarifying statement that, that we, uh, we continuously welcome immigrants, uh, and, and, uh, people who wish to come to Proctor and, uh, and settle here to make this, uh, to make this part of the town, or, or part of their life. Um, I think probably most of you realize that, uh, that Vermont's population is aging, um, it's, uh, it's, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have to rely on immigration to, uh, to continue paying taxes, uh, to support those of us who are retired, looking on social security, somebody's gotta pay for that system, and right now, uh, we're not having enough babies, San Diego's is a tiny, uh, we're not really investing fast enough, and, and really, uh, immigration represents our best hope of, of invigorating our economy and invigorating our society. Um, I don't have a lot more to say than that, um, again, I think, I think this is a, this is a worthwhile document, and, uh, I would like to see the town attend.
Anybody have anything else?
Of towns?
Yes.
So you're looking for a motion tonight to approve this? Correct? Motion to be made to make the declaration or to table it to a later meeting. What's everyone's?
I'd like to table it until a later meeting, simply to do a little more looking into it. I want, like, to see the list of towns maybe that have adopted it. It looks great, you know, on the face of it, I just would like to think about it, do some research.
Is there anybody else that has concerns and wanna review it longer, or is there...
I mean, I absolutely agree with this in principle, I would like our town council to look at it too, to make sure that, you know, it doesn't open us up to anything. I don't think it does, but I'm not a lawyer, and that's why we have lawyers, so.
Mm-hmm.
In principle, it makes a lot of sense.
Anybody else, would you rather make a motion to approve tonight, or hold off to another meeting?
I'd like to let the lawyer look at it.
Yeah.
Okay, we will table this to our next meeting, okay?
Alright, and that, that would be, uh, the, uh, what, what was the date that you gave me?
January, what is it?
The eleventh.
January tenth?
Yes.
Okay, uh, would you be sure and send me notes about that, then, uh, I'd like to be included in that as well.
I sure will Steve.
Thank you.
Uh, is there, one more question, one more question, is there, is there any point in, um, I don't know, in, in inviting members of the community to, uh, to comment on this, or would the board rather take it on their own?
I think people from the community are welcome to come, so if there's anything out there that's on the agenda and they have concerns, they could, they're more than welcome to come and voice their opinion. But I think, I think the concern of the board is they just wanted, um, our attorney to look at it for the legality of it.
Sure, I understand, and I accept that, that's very good, I'm, I'm happy with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Steve.
Alright, I'm gonna say goodnight.
Goodnight.
Goodnight Steve.
Take care.
Okay, is there any good stuff?
About the roads right back, considering the weather we had, uh, over the holidays, uh, they did a good job.
I also wanted to comment, I don't know if, um, the Canuches did it, but put all the snowmen around town?
Oh, no.
Who did?
Greg Oslly.
Okay.
Greg Oslly.
Oslly.
Yep, too bad that people are damaging them and stole one of the ones in the park.
Oh, are they? Oh, will some of them fall apart easy? So I didn't know if they were just falling apart, or...
No.
Yeah, one was stolen from the park, and we put up a, uh, a missing per, missing snowman.
Did it come back?
Well, he made another one. I got really excited, 'cause I thought it worked, but it didn't. He made another one.
Alright, okay. Um, highway department.
Um, just to start off with, uh, kinda bigger outline, lining news is that, uh, the engine brake signs had to come down. Uh, following advice from V-Trans, the engine brakes, brake signs have been removed from Route Three. These signs are not endorsed by the MUTCD and are not supported by Vermont State Law. Engine brakes are federally mandated safety equipment, and as long as they are applied correctly, they should fall below the allowable eighty decibels, and if they don't, then the truck's gonna be ticketed. So, um, and then you have your, the, the operations report. In your packets, most of it, uh, is made up of snow and ice removal.
Would you ask John not to throw away those engine brake signs, just sit on them?
Oh, we'll sit on them.
They're down already, right?
They are down.
Okay. Alright, anything else under highway? Is there a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Back end.
All in favor?
Aye.
Billings and seat report, everybody has?
It's one page.
One page. Um, the town received over twenty-five thousand dollars in V-CAP funding, which was, uh, federal aid to support people who needed to pay some of their utility bills back. Uh, it's taken up a lot of Celia's time, I can't take any credit for any of that, she's done a lot of work getting that squared away, so, um, we're down to one page, and the goal going into the spring will be to locate those curb stops so that, so that if we have to take action on, uh, on some of these addresses, we can.
So I assume all the ones that don't have an agreement, they're working to try to still get an agreement, or they'll just be shut off?
Um, if, yeah, so if they don't have an agreement by now, she's, she continues to work with them.
Right.
But, yeah, if they don't have an agreement in the spring, we're gonna go through, find curb stops and start.
Good.
Shut big off.
Yep. Okay.
How about proper, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll bring it up again, but I, I'd like to hear from Celia in like, a month or two, and see how many of these agreements are being followed through with, 'cause this has happened in the past, that one or two payments are made and then...
I just have a question about the properties being sold, they should still be setting up an agreement, regardless of the property's being sold, 'cause...
If the property's being sold, they have to pay it off, right, correct?
Yeah, they have a lien on the property.
They don't process their, their property transfer unless on their utilities etc.
Right, right, and I knew that, but I'm just saying, like, if the house doesn't sell for two years?
Oh yeah, we still are trying to get it up here with that.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks Carol.
Thanks Carol. Thank you. Anything else under the water commissioners? Is there a motion to go out of water into sewer?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You have the report in front of you? Anybody have any questions on that?
These are a couple of sore backups, there's no legal action following up, is there, yes, of yet. Thank you.
They get Stiles Meadows, straightened the replacement equipment in yet? We've submitted the invoices for the emergency popper, pump around, and the quotes to the insurance company, so, I mean, it's, the pump stations, pump station is up and running, yeah, it's just, you know, on temporary repairs.
So they haven't got to get new equipment in yet?
Not yet, no.
Anybody have questions about the Willow Sewer Project update?
Who? I've, I've got a, are we on the Willow Street Sewer update? Okay, you ready for me to go?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, the, the project is, is finalizing, uh, permits to work along the stream, um, and as requested by the affected landowner, A&E has invited a certified wetland delineator to back up the state's finding that, um, that this area is indeed not classified as a wetland, hopefully it's found that way anyway. Uh, there are three more updated easements that I need to acquire, uh, Eighteen Pleasant, Sixteen Pleasant, and One Gorham Bridge Road. One Gorham Bridge Road's been hard to get a hold of, I've called and, and made visits and sent a letter, but they're just, they're either at work when I go by, or, I went by this evening later, and, you know, nobody was there, so, getting the updated easement from One Gorham Bridge Road has been tough. Um, where do you live at, Tom, eighteen or sixteen? Alright, Tom, Dody and I have been working, his property is being affected, uh, pretty, a pretty good amount because of this project, he's got a lot of sewer running through there. We were able to abate some of the damage that's gonna be done to his property by, um, by implementing boring instead of conventional dig, but he's still gonna lose a couple tall big trees. And it's not as simple as just paying him back for the trees, because these trees provide screening from the railroad, so it's, it's not an easy, uh, financial formula to figure out. So Tom and I are, the goal is, is to kinda work out some type of deal to where, you know, he's being, you know, the assets that he's losing is reimbursed somehow. So we can have that conversation with you now, or Tom and I can work together and come back to you at a later board meeting. Uh, Tom, I don't know if you're prepped to kinda talk about what, what you would like to see at the end of the day yet, but...
In generalities, maybe, um, I really just wanted to come and, and talk in good faith to the board, and not, you know, definitely not trying to stand in the way of this, as many of you are familiar, my former career, uh, you know, I'm probably more understanding than most of the importance of the projects, uh, from a town standpoint, and I definitely support the project as a whole, I just, um, the easement language as it was presented to me was for replacement of landscaping, uh, vegetation, shrubs, and small trees that may be affected in the front yard, and a significant portion of, of what will be done, and some of what's clear that Michael's talking about is actually in, where the revised easement alignment is, not in the current easement, would lose some of those trees that do provide screening for us with the railroad, and, um, you know, as a, some justification as to property values for that, we, uh, my wife and I had our house appraised as part of a refinancing that we did over the summer, and part of the appraisal noted that proximity to railroad tracks and the noise that was, that was due to that, you know, had some effect on our value of our house, so, um, it's something that is, you know, has some real effect on the value of our property, and, and just, I've been trying to work with Michael and come up with, you know, something that works for everybody, so, uh, I think, I think we can get there, but I just, you know, in good faith, wanted to come here tonight and talk to you folks as well, so.
So I guess my input I'm looking for is how do you all think we should move forward with this? You kinda trust that me and Tom can work something out, come to you at another board meeting and, and present it to you after we have...
I think that would be better.
Sure. Okay. Um, yeah, and that's, you know, if, if it were something simple, like go back there and plant some trees, we wouldn't be here talking about this, but, there's special circumstances, every town deals with it, so I don't think it's, you know, beyond our reach to... Yeah, I'm sure some of those trees are, you know, sixty, yeah.
Some of mine are probably a hundred and fifty feet tall, a couple of them are maybe these, yeah, it's, some significant screening for us, so.
So everyone's okay to have, give Michael approval to work with Tom to resolve this?
Yeah.
Alright.
See what you... Work out. Okay. Appreciate it Tom. Or an A and a B, or something, yeah.
Thanks for coming down tonight, Tom.
Yeah, thanks Tom.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the...
Oh.
Hey, managers' reports, oh, wait, anything else under sewage?
Move to go out of sewage, and...
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, managers' reports.
First off, the shared use path, I, I didn't think I'd be giving updates on any of this for a while, since it's under review, um, but, here we are. So, the engine, the engineers were traveling over the holidays, I told you last meeting, I was getting by them here, but it just didn't really seem to make sense, they were talking about people showing up who aren't as familiar with the project as they are, so, it wouldn't hurt to push it back to January tenth. Uh, in your packets, I, you all, you all have updated information on the soil samples that they took. Uh, I printed off, I've been killing my printer with, with pictures and stuff, so I did print Tom off a few, um, uh, pictures of where the samples were taken. Uh, what's important about this is, uh, the cost estimates were conservative at the planning stage of the project. It is now expected that the town will pay out of pocket, so, this stuff is, this stuff doesn't qualify for match. Okay? So, out of pocket, the town will pay thirteen thousand five hundred for contaminated soil disposal, alright, at seventy-five dollars a ton, or a hundred and eighty tons, that's what we're thinking is gonna, it's gonna cost us to remove this stuff. Before we got into the planning phase, as where we're at now, uh, VHB assumed we'd have to remove four hundred and seventy tons, which is much more than we are now, at a higher cost, which was a hundred dollars per ton, equalling forty-seven thousand, alright? So, knowing all of this now, even with the really bad soil report that we got, which I think a lot of people knew was gonna happen anyway, um, total cost savings from early estimates are down fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. So the total costs that are not reimbursable now equal twenty-four thousand, okay? So that thirteen thousand goes to twenty-four thousand, because you still have the railroad stuff you have to remove, which was a part of the plan. Um, and, and that's the, I think that's the bigger part of the, of the update that I can provide without the professionals being here. Um, and I can add on top of that, is that the engineers don't believe that a full, maxed out, uh, soil management plan is gonna have to be drafted. I don't know whether they put any money on that or not, but they think that they can create a streamlined management plan to where we don't get bogged down with DEC.
So if I'm reading this right, their worst case scenario for the soil management plan is five thousand dollars. Three to five?
Oh, um, yes. So, if we had to pay that five, we're still... Under. Well under. Okay.
One of the permitted uses of this soil that's removed is capping a landfill. Any possibility we could bring this to our landfill, until we're ready to cap it?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure that we even have to take it to a special landfill or not, I think i- if it, it, if it leaves off-site, we're gonna have to pay a certain amount, but that's a question I'd have to, we'd probably wanna ask the engineers. Yes, when they come in two weeks.
But if it's contaminated, and that's the reason we're removing it, I would think it would have to go somewhere.
They're saying that we could use it as alternative daily cover for...
That doesn't make sense.
I know. Well, what, what I'm reading is, it's not contaminated very much. Um, the, the contamination isn't down at the quarry, the contamination is up by the Beaver Pond Outlet, which surprises me. Um, I would have presumed that it would have been down by the old, uh...
By the roundhouse.
Yeah, exactly, see the roundhouse is way down here, the contamination's up here by...
Can I ask you a question, Michael?
Yeah, well...
Okay. When you remove this soil, what do you replace the soil with? Like, if some of that's low area, alright, I'm thinking of a way to replace, what do you replace the soil with?
I think the engineers, when they come on the tenth, will probably have more input than we can guess at.
I hope that their scope is accurate.
Mm-hmm. Well, we, I'm not sure if we're taking some out of here, uh, to make the path, and we could bring it down to put it in where some's coming up, I'm sure they could tell us.
Yeah, and I've been a part of projects where you had to pay special fees because it was contaminated soil, but they didn't necessarily have to go full-fledged and take it to a special site.
Right.
Um, so, I'm not sure where the fee comes from, but it's there somewhere, it's definitely...
We have to have somebody with the CDL with a hazmat endorsement.
Yeah, it might be transportation.
It just seems odd that if it's contaminated and we're removing it from that spot to do a bike path, that they're saying, you can put it somewhere else in your town.
Right.
It just sounds...
Well, but on top of the landfill, it's already contaminated, I would imagine, I don't know, let's let the engineers do that.
Anyway, it's good we had the conversation, we know where we're at with it, we're prepared to ask some questions when they come next time. Yep.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, so I'll, I'll keep going slowly and, uh, you know, pause for, for room for questions. Uh, town report, a lot of this is old news, aside from, um, later down the list where we get to schedule. So, twenty-twenty-one audit enclosure, that was a, a topic we spoke on at the last select board meeting, and I've included the statute in your packet, and I'll just read it aloud here, according to twenty, twenty-four, VSA subsection sixteen eighty-two, the auditor shall report their findings in writing and cause the same to be mailed or otherwise distributed to the voters, to the town, at least ten days before the annual meeting. Uh, I know we talked about maybe that wouldn't have to be the full audit, I just don't know what that would look like at this time, and I may not be able to figure it out this year by the time we send stuff out.
Mm-hmm.
It seems pretty clear. Yeah. Um, the numbers of copies that we require, Celia and I, the treasurer, clerk and I reached out to the post office, eight hundred and thirty-two people along the route, so we definitely need eight hundred and thirty-two, and then the staff, select board, and then extras, just in case no one gets any, so that gets us right to about that eight fifty-five number. And then the schedule, uh, you'll find the printing schedule with repro in your packets, I've been very clear with them that this is my first, uh, go-around with this, and they've agreed to babysit. They have been great to work with, by the way. Yeah. So... That's, that's good. Assistant assessor, we have interviews coming up next week? Well, with one candidate?
The lady from Fallonster.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
So we've set that up, Celia and I are gonna sit down and talk to her, and, uh, we, we've also asked, uh, Lisa Wright to be there, since Lisa Wright's gonna be delegating most of the work, probably be good to have somebody with the knowledge there. I like small stuff like this, but I ordered new flags, Bruce, you brought this up at a few select board meetings ago, I ordered some new flags for the poles over here, uh, they look good, they're a little bit bigger than the ones we have on there now, but, but they look, they look nice. And, we'll probably put them up tomorrow, and I'll give them to you, and you send them to the Legion to be retired. Sure. Sound like a good plan? Uh, in addition to flags, this is kinda off-topic, but, kinda on the same thing, I spoke to Joel with Omya, and I haven't let it go, about the signs coming in and out of Proctor, he said we can have whatever we want from over there. Um, I, I asked him, at least, can I take some pictures and show you what we take? And he said that might be good, so, when the snow gets off the rubble pile over there, you know, maybe I'll go down there with an Our Yard member, a Parks and Rec member, someone from here, and we'll pick out some stone that we think we like, that would go on the edge of town, whatever we're gonna put on it. We also wanna make sure that Brett, it works for him too, 'cause he sounds like he'd be willing to do the carving for us. So, kinda neat. Yeah. Um, and then we get into, uh, emergency, the emergency management portion of my report. The local hazard mitigation plan committee had our midsection meeting in December, Stephanie Burke is requesting a lot of information from groups, so we have set aside time in January, um, to hold an in-house technical meeting, we've done this once before, they're super productive, uh, and, so we're gonna, we're gonna get the data, we need to establish clear mitigation goals and examine the strengths and weaknesses of the town's emergency readiness.
Mm-hmm.
The regional emergency management committee, the R-E-M-C is made up of voting and non-voting emergency management representatives from across the region, there are fifty-four voting members, two from each town, I'm one, and Kevin Blonge is one. Uh, alright, so there are fifty-four voting members, which means it takes twenty-eight people to ha- hold a, have a quorum, uh, we did not have a quorum the first time, and there, there is a good bit of revolt against, against this bylaw, 'cause we don't think we will ever have one, if that's the case, um, a lot of cats to herd. So, anyway, at, you know, at this meeting, we, we discussed the bylaws, um, we, uh, elected a chairperson, at our next group meeting, we're charged with finding a mission and vision of the group, and, um, you know, but the overall purpose of this group is, uh, coordinating emergency planning and preparedness activities to improve the region's ability to prepare for, respond to, and recover from all disasters. Uh, next on the list, we have the Beaver Pond Committee meeting that was held at Franks the other night, Tom, you're the resident committee member here, do you wanna speak on a little bit about...
A little bit, I wasn't at the meeting.
Oh, okay.
We are applying for, uh, ten-foot addition to our dock on Beaver Pond through the Mortimer Proctor Fund, uh, plans for a fishing, I don't know if you wanna call it a derby this summer for kids, last year's went over quite well, and we're kinda shut down for the winter, and the gate's locked, and certainly welcome ice fishermen, skaters, whoever, let's use it.
I've never, I've, I've spoke to Tom about this, I've never seen ice fishing happening before, so I'm excited to see that happen.
It's like watching golf.
Oh, I'm not...
Tom was excited as regular fish.
No, it is, it's exciting.
Oh, and then...
Cold and cold. Um, also Megan, I just wanted to say Megan reached out to me about the rink, just for updates. updates too, so I'll give you that if you want.
That's perfect.
So she just wanted me to let you know that they made ice last Thursday and Christmas Eve, um, and the weather on Christmas, um, messed up the ice. So, um, it got warmer, but they're gonna open as soon as they can. They've had three tour bus companies looking to skate mid-January from New York City and she said she'd tell them that they, you know, they'd be allowed if there was no change with the COVID cases and things like that. Um, some comp- there's two companies waiting for callbacks about using the place too as well. So that's really good. Um, Brian built a new skate rack in the basement and all the roller skates are on it down in the basement now, so the other skates are upstairs. So the ice skates. Um, and I did tell her that, just to be leery, because I saw we're in the new city, New York City has the highest rate of Omicron that, um, anyplace else. So if buses are coming up, we may want to be leery of that. So hopefully it'll survive. But it's great that they, they're having all this attention to the skinny rink and that people want to use it and stuff. So, and hopefully the weather will cooperate.
Yeah.
They put all that time and effort in and then it just like.
And, and they're not easy decisions to make because Proctor truly has unique assets.
Right.
So you can't really do a lot of case studies. You know, I can't call up and say, hey, you got an ice rink like ours? What are you doing?
Right.
So we've kind of gotta just make responsible decisions as we, as we just have to adapt.
Right. And she is looking into the pricing of trying to have the extended ice time, you know, with the equipment. So.
All right.
So I think, and they also did Santa at the rink for kids that were in quarantine when we did Santa at the library. I don't know how Santa can be in two places at once, but I guess.
It's magic, yeah. Uh, and, uh, that concludes my manager's report. Thank you.
All right. Now we have action items. The bills, everybody got those? Signed those? Okay, perfect. Um, sheriff's report. Anybody have questions on?
Page two, uh, towards the top, uh, the officer stopped, got out of his cruiser and talked with some children that were sliding in the park. That's, that's great. You know, get out of their car once in a while and mingle with the real people, do some DME policing.
Fiscal 23 budget review. Oh, did you want to know about the Proctor gas?
Well, yeah, you know, it, it might be worth noting that there was a break-in at Proctor gas and quite a few other break-ins of vehicles. So, uh, I'm sure investigations are, are ongoing. In the meantime, you know, make sure you lock up your cars and houses and hopefully things calm down one day. But as, as of right now, it'd be, it'd be good to lock up your valuables. Message from the town manager.
Good thing I have none. All right. Uh, let's see. So the budget.
So we, I, I think we're kind of near the end of this thing. I made the updates to the highway department that we discussed at our last meeting, which had to do with snow and plows. We just brought it back to prior year expenditure amounts. And then I adjusted lease, uh, our lister's, um, contract fees, uh, to match the numbers on, on her documents.
Anybody have any more questions on the budget or changes that they wanted?
No, I'm good with it. If, uh, you know, Michael said he made the changes we suggested, then I'm good with it.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the existing fiscal 23 draft budget?
Some move?
Second.
Favor. All right. Thank you. Budget's approved.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. It went quick.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I, I will. Um, the general fund, total expenditure amount, budgeted expenditure amount is $1,476,142.56. That's the general fund and highway. Now, the water fund.
That's okay. I don't need that.
Oh, okay.
Because you don't vote on that.
Okay.
All right. Okay, next, legal services. The RFP that was sent out, there were two submittals. I didn't know if, if we were, are we gonna go, are you just want to talk about that now? You don't want to?
Yeah, well, I mean, we can talk about it now.
Well, I saw you had it down executive session.
Um.
Or something different?
That's something different.
Okay. Um, so everybody got the proposals correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I guess my question is when you referenced using both of them, is it just like on a case-by-case basis, who you'd go to based on what their services were?
I believe that's the case. So, you know, it, you know, so, uh, what's his name? So Gary, you know, is saying his services are $165.
Right.
You know, but then you look over at the other, which is Carol Bowe Pill and Kite PC, which is significantly more expensive, but they appear to have a great deal of resources. So you can.
Yeah. Totally different, um, proposals, because I mean, this is like a one-page, and if it's just him at $165, where this is a firm.
Yeah.
And there's several attorneys and the, like, the lowest one is $20 more.
Yeah.
An hour. So I just, I actually worked with both of these. Um, so we do a lot with, um, Jim Carroll and his group, um, in a lot of situations where they're actually helping us. The other has been on the opposing time side. That's worked with us. So, but I haven't had dealings with both of them, so I'm familiar.
With Carols, they'd be allowed paralegal stuff, which is significantly cheaper.
Right, right.
Gary does work for us now though, and.
Yeah.
I've never had an issue with what he's done for us.
So, yeah, I don't see a problem with, uh, yeah, I can reach back out to them after we're done and say, you know, this is where we're at. We're, we'd like to choose two if that's what the select board would like. And, um, yeah, I think they both sound like really good resources for different opportunities that are presented to us or challenges.
I think if, like, the majority of our stuff is, like Ben said, paralegal work, you know, research, things like that, it'd be a lot cheaper with them, yeah, $95 an hour versus $165 an hour. So I'm just, so if we're not gonna go lean one way, then it's probably better to go with both.
Yeah.
Works for me. Okay.
Sure.
Question?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of one topic. I was just wondering if there's any updates on the legal case regarding the power company and the lawsuit or whatever was going on.
No, we haven't. There's no resolution, if that's what you're asking for.
No, no resolution yet. I believe they are, uh, getting closer.
Right, right.
Compared to the last meeting, yes.
Court dates keep getting pushed back too, so.
Because of COVID, yes.
Yeah.
All right.
Next is, um, we've already covered that. So the, um, draft warning for the marijuana retail. Um, there's an article one and an article two.
If you have any questions on how I came up with that, feel free to ask them. Uh, pretty much I just looked around to see what other localities had done. And I'll, and I'll tell you this before really getting into it. Jamaica, Vermont, who, um, was one of the sources, before they went and put this on their warning, it was one article and they changed it to two articles. And, and that does seem to make sense to me because it seems to be two separate items. So.
So one, one says that we'll authorize retailers and then one says that we will issue licenses, basically?
So can I just, um, just because we've gone through this and I, I researched this and, and we cannot authorize licenses, integrated licenses. So that, that would have to be reworded, I think, because we as a town don't have the authority. The state is the one who authorizes integrated licenses. So I just wanted to, I just did some checking for terminology.
I think it's best, for sure.
They, so you can, like, a lot, like, the city combined it as one instead of two.
Oh, yeah.
But if we did it as two, what we could always do is, is somehow word it based off of the statute that, um, shall the town of Proctor authorize retail, the retail portion of cannabis integrated licenses. So in other words, if somebody, if we approve, um, cannabis retail here, they can come in and sell only what they're given to sell. The integrated licenses, from the way I understand it, is they have, they produce the product themselves as well. So the state authorizes them to do that. So we can't tell them they can't. They can do it regardless of what we say.
Oh.
But if, if it's like a process, if it's retail, we can, we can say, no, we don't want you selling the retail portion of it. You can do the production and that part of it.
Right.
But you can't do retail with an integrated license. So I think it's just rewording it with retail.
I've added in your packet, uh, the, uh, the article about integrated licenses. Looks like an integrated license is cultivation, wholesale, product manufacturing, retail, and a testing laboratory. So that's what the five integrated licenses, or five integrated activities inside of a license are. But I do see what you're saying, Judy, that we, it's not up to us to authorize a license anywhere.
Right. And I think the statute, like, if it reads, um, you can have a vote to permit the operation of a licensed cannabis retailer or integrated licensee within the municipality.
Yeah.
So I think it kind of, it, it's just the retail component.
Can I just ask a question? This is hard before the horse. Um, so say that this is approved in March or July, how is this addressed in zoning regulations? I.e., could this be considered home occupation? Can someone live in their, in a residential neighborhood? And it says retail, but we have home occupation. So what is to call it to not delineate it as a home occupation business? And I was just wondering if those kinds of things are discussed or looked at, because just when you look at our community, the retail space is rather limited. So it would assume that it's probably going to be some kind of home occupation.
Don't have a brewery right here? Somebody's home?
They're, they're not coming in, you're not following in out of their garage. It's a wholesale. So.
But you're saying, you're saying it's a resale place?
I'm asking this to allow it to work. If it's been addressed.
No, it hasn't, no. Why don't we hold on this for a little bit? This is, this is brand new to Vermont, so.
It is, but I think if we, I think it's important to remember that if we don't opt out during town meeting day, then it's allowed, as far as I've seen from all of my research.
I thought that in the way of general conversation, once or twice, we batted this around a bit, I felt that we had all agreed that we would not allow retail sale and that, you know, there's plenty of, um, businesses out there that are doing this already in Vermont and we just wouldn't have it.
So again, unless I'm mistaken, if we don't expressly say that it's not allowed in the town, then as of July first. But to me, that's a decision for the town meeting. I did, I just, I think that's too big of a thing to not put to town meeting.
Oh, so let this, the voters decide yes or no.
Yes.
Well, we can, we can decide and then put it on the ballot. That's what this is all about.
Yeah, exactly.
For them to vote then. But I don't think we as a board decided we didn't want it in town.
No.
Because I don't remember ever saying no.
I just thought it was general conversation and that we had more or less all just said there were a lot of those opportunities elsewhere and we didn't want it in Proctor.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall that. Do you ever?
I'm just, I'm confused. I don't see the state allowing people just to group and sell it out of their, basically out of their front door by just buying the license. I don't think the festival works, if I understand the way they're setting it up. I think you have pretty much a store type of.
Right. Well, well, my understanding is it's like, like next door, across the street. If they wanted to open a mill and have cannabis and they wanted, you know, to bring it in, dry it, produce it, whatever, they would get the license from the state to do that.
Right. I don't think anybody could do it right.
We only get, we only can authorize them to have a retail shop there as well to sell in our town. So it's mostly all about retail and selling it within your town. So.
I just didn't think anybody could have a store in their house. But I guess maybe you can, I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there's nothing here that qualifies for a retail store.
No.
You're putting a lot of verbiage in here and there's nothing that qualifies. And we have what are considered home occupations in Proctor. So that is people selling things right out of their house. So as long, which is based on square footage and is based on number of employees. So that is like a retail space in someone's house. So my question is if you're going to propose something, I'd like to, I mean, I'm happy to stand up and ask it at March meeting, but I think all information should be available rather than, than, you know, say it passes and you say, well, wait, well, that's not what we understood retail space to be. I mean, and it doesn't say, I'm sorry, it doesn't say like, can it be across from the high school? Can it be, you know, there's a lot of questions that, uh, I think are not addressed.
I think once it, sorry, once it's passed, as far as we authorize retail, if we have retail storefront, it's retail storefront and you can have it there, whether it's across from the high school, whether it's across from town offices or anything, I think. But, um, I'm happy to check into that, just to get clarification of that, the residential piece and whether it's can be housed, a business can be housed out of your home, um, for retail purposes. And again, it's strictly retail. So they're not growing it. They're not doing anything. They're just, they're purchasing it from somebody who does produce it and they're selling it to the, the population.
I know. Could I circle back to his, his, your concern of the, of the board? I don't understand exactly. So if you, if you don't have a vote to say nay, that, that you'd lose control of being able to say no to having a store? Is that what you're saying?
That's my understanding, yes, of the way the law's written.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I, yeah, and so I don't have to have hard copies of the, of the, uh, town report, which has the warnings in it until January 27th. So we got some time. I'll, I'll see if the LCT can provide us any guidance too. In the meantime, and, um, definitely we can, if, if this is the path we're gonna go, I got no problem setting something up on the 10th.
That's why they'll put it on the ballot, right?
Um, no, they didn't. I think they had it at a Board of Alderman meeting, but the town, the city didn't vote. The, the Board of Alderman chose to put it on the ballot.
Right.
And let the, and so we don't have to, they don't, they don't have town meeting. So you can't discuss it. It just goes on the ballot and that's how the vote gets out there, is it's either yay or nay.
Right. But that, that's my point. So that's why they put it on the ballot, because if they don't opt out, then.
Right, right. Yeah.
Thank you.
I've got a little question. Do we think that we're gonna do town meeting in person this year?
You have to right now. The legislature has not changed. There's no drive-through voting right now unless the legislature makes a change. All leading school and municipal must be in person. We have no option.
I was concerned about trying to do this kind of a thing over Zoom.
Yeah.
You're not under a state emergency case. You have no option but to be in person?
But I mean, things can change between now and town meeting.
Let's hope.
I don't think they'll make a session of the vote on that soon.
Only for drive-by voting, not, um, drive-through voting.
Okay, so we'll just get more information. Do you want to put this on the next?
Please.
Because I'd, I'd like it sooner rather than later. Time creeps up quickly. All right. Picture selection for the town report.
So I probably could have made this decision in a silo, but that's not really, I don't operate like that, unfortunately. So, um, for some things I don't. If I have to, I will. But here's your reports from last year and the year before, you have a collage and you have the town, okay, so Carol gave me some pictures here, we've got one of Beaver Pond in the snow. We have one of the bridge, oh. Bridge, and then one of the cabin at the rink. So. You like the bridge?
Yeah.
I, I like Beaver Pond.
Put them both on.
Could put them both on there. Does anyone, does anyone hate, does anyone hate one and would be disappointed if it weren't on, okay, not crazy about the rink?
No, I think it could.
It's not my, it's not my top pick.
No, I didn't.
No.
It would be my third choice.
Okay, so we're all in agreement with that. So, so maybe I'll surprise you with which one of these is on there?
Yeah, surprises.
What?
You could do a, a collage, you should have that and those two.
Well, you have to get board support for it.
Might boost the printing up.
You want us, what?
Might boost the printing up, three-color pictures.
Okay.
Let's go with the bridge because it's not winter and we're all ready for spring, right?
Yes, do bridge.
And it's like an iconic piece.
I'm fine, I'm fine with the bridge, so what do you think? Which one do you like?
You know, the bridge looks.
That's a nice picture.
Yeah.
It actually looks nicer, they didn't print out very well, so, bridge. All right.
Put the, the other one on the back side.
You can't because of safety.
Postage.
You can't, no.
I don't think it was in the bid either.
Just one picture?
Well, next year we'll do the pond then.
Next year we'll do the pond, put it in the minutes. Okay. All right, thanks, that was good. Helpful, very helpful.
All right. Facility use agreement for four-wind nature program.
I didn't see an insurance form.
I could.
They're with this so.
School.
School bag, I, I found that out too.
You need to have the school sign it then. You can't, you can't accept the things used at schools insurance from just anyone. This is just a resident who does a program, you need to have.
Oh, so it's not a program within the school?
It's a program that happens at the school, but you can't accept this new school insurance without having a building administrator sign off on it. I mean, you're asking, that would be like someone coming in and wanting to use the town's insurance because they want to be at the pond or something.
Signed off on the one, we had like the dance over there at the skating rink.
It was before my time, I think.
Or.
Principal.
I thought it was borderline whether it needed one or not, because it's, I think it's just going to be.
They should be covered under the schools, then we don't, we didn't require it as a certificate.
Oh, I meant like borderline whether they needed a facility use agreement, just because I don't know.
Oh, okay, okay, I see what you're saying.
They're just going to be out in the field, you know, I mean, kind of doing nature stuff, so.
Out here.
So, yeah, oh, Elma Village Greens, I even was one, like, had bigger questions of what triggered a.
I mean, they could easily walk down from the school and go out in the park and we wouldn't even know it.
So that's, yeah, so I think.
It's just adults, it's not kids.
The four-leaf, four winds?
Four winds.
It's, it's just for training, it's not, I don't think it's to have.
It is, it's for training of volunteers, yeah.
Yeah, it's not to have, it's not for kids to be under, it's just for adults.
I guess they probably did a facility use so that they know they can go out there in case something else was going on. Like, say if a wedding was going on or something, then I wouldn't be looking at trees and stuff, people, but.
Does money change hands here between?
Um, you see the ring, these are all volunteers, they're all parents in town.
They don't pay to take the course.
Uh, the school, we, we've, we pay through the PTO for them to take the course. It's a, it's a course you pay for, yeah. I, I don't think it's a problem, I think you probably just call Christie and she would sign it. I'm just saying, I mean, I think Ben would understand as an instructor, as a matter of policy, you have to have building administrator that's authorizing the use of the insurance policy for the schools.
Michael, I'm sure if you called Christie, we would deal with the elementary school and just said, can you initial this?
Okay.
Yeah, you're right, though, I, I question whether they even need it.
Yeah, because what's to stop 20 people from town to go?
Right.
Definitely, yeah, and probably why I didn't pack a lot of resources and figuring much of it out, but, and so, and Ellen Moriarty isn't representative of the school?
She's just, she's, she's the parent leader.
Oh, okay, so there's a little confusion there, okay, so I'll figure this stuff out.
Well, I don't think Michael should be chasing insurance, I think if this is a school program, the school should follow through and.
Well, I mean, I guess if it was back, do, do you need a facility?
Right, I don't really think we do, we definitely don't need, I don't think, a certificate of insurance.
We have really cracked down on these certificates as insurance, I, I don't think we should pick and choose.
Right, for an event, but this isn't an event.
It isn't?
No, these are just volunteers going out there and learning how to train in the program.
I call that an event.
I do too.
Well, what qualifies a town of Proctor? I think it goes.
Well, that's what I was wondering.
I mean, you have people that are sliding it at night, that seems to be that, that would be a bigger safety concern than, you know, 20 adults that are practicing for a program that they're going to take up to the elementary school, so.
Oh, when there's a prom and everybody goes over there and takes pictures in the gazebo, it's like.
Nope.
We don't patrol it.
So it was a tough one, I did talk to Celia a little bit about it and she said she's always on the fence about it, she said if it was like a wedding using the pavilion, she would consider doing a facility use, but.
It's like if someone had a birthday party and did a scavenger hunt and hid things out in the park and they brought all the kids down.
So the park's a tricky one. I mean, the rink's pretty cut and dry.
Right. But the park's a public park.
Yeah, the park's a tricky one.
Why don't we ask our insurance company?
Because they'll say, well, it's a case-by-case basis.
Okay, then we're covered, right?
I'll give you a straight answer, they'll make it, so it's on you as far as.
So in this case, to, just.
This is also July, January 4th, guys.
Yeah, but we need to decide now.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that struck me as odd, they're going to hold an outdoor class?
No, it's not a class, it's just they're training volunteers to help within the program. So there's a program at the school, they have volunteers and the volunteers, they want to bring them into the park to be outdoors, to learn about nature, so they are trained to work in this program, that's my understanding.
Right, every month is a different topic and they used to train at the library and there's a facilitator that comes from four winds. And my guess is maybe it's something about tracking or something like that, that's why they want to be outside. And she comes and they talk about how facilitate it in the classroom, the literature to use, how to talk to them based on what classroom you're in, and these adults then go back and facilitate this with, within whatever classroom they've signed up to do at the, at the elementary school. They're all volunteers, they're all parents in town, some have kids at the elementary school, some no longer have kids at the elementary school, some no longer have kids in school, but they've done it. And so it's something we do at West Rutland, it's, they do it at Rutland Town, so it's just, it's part of the training.
I don't, I don't, I think the idea maybe just in this case, since we're kind of involved in it at this point, I'll just go up to the, I like hanging out at the elementary school, they're nice people up there, so I'll go up there and just have them initial it as the representatives and, and we can kind of hash out bigger details.
That sounds like a good plan.
Another time.
Is there anything else in the regular board meeting before we go into executive session? Is there a motion to go into executive session for confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the body?
So.
Is there a second? Favor?
All right, go ahead, all right.